We'll call to order the regular meeting of the Celine Area Schools Board of Education for Tuesday, March 11th, 2014. I invite you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could remain standing for just a minute.
We'd like to observe a moment of silence in honor and memory of Jim Letcher, longtime Celine Area School teacher who tragically passed away last week. Thank you.
This is the portion of the meeting where a member of the public can address the board for up to three minutes or asked to be placed on a future agenda. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board this evening? Step forward.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Lukar. I'm a taxpayer of this school system. I actually want information from the board and the district. I, um, the board, the district set a precedent, so I think the rest of the district needs to know. The board, the district, and the administrators set the precedent that any student may be kicked out of any event based on their skill, knowledge, and their personality without violating any school policy. The teachers, instructors, directors, really need to know that they have the power that they can do this, because it was done with ease. There was no issues. They just said, "You're out." The district, the board, also went against your own human resource department's recommendations. So, solutions are always a good first thing, so this really truly needs to be district-wide. Every student needs to know that they may be kicked out for no reason. Every teacher, instructor, director truly needs to know that they have the power to do that, because it was already set. The precedent was already set. Now, this transcends into all of your children that might go to this school. This transcends into all the special ed kids that might go to this school, because it has happened. So, I know you can't address me. I'm asking for inquiry. I'm asking for a policy change. You set the precedent, the district set the precedent. You allowed this to happen. Now make it district-wide, so that everybody knows what they're up against when they come to school, so that all of the students know that they may be kicked out for not violating any school policy. The teachers need to know that they are allowed to do this. So, I'm ready to talk to anyone who will listen, because you really do not support the kids of this system, and you totally have proven that by allowing this to happen and support it.
Can I ask you what happened? I mean, you just went through a statement, and we have no idea what the situation is.
You know what? The information has been sent to the, this board, the information has been to Mr. Grayden, the information has been to Community Ed. The information actually has gone to the state. So, I'm sorry, but you do have that information. It has been sent to you, and it would take longer than the three minutes to go through everything that happened.
Okay, we'll follow along.
And I truly only have the three minutes.
We'll follow along with you, thank you. Okay. Are there others who wish to address the board this evening?
Good evening. I am Suzanne Sislow, and this is my husband Dan. And we stand here before the board once again this evening to ask you to reconsider the risks that exist for our son and other students if the student we spoke of last meeting is allowed the privilege to attend the Celine schools in light of his choices. We ask you tonight to have the courage to stand out from other school districts, to stand up for what's right, to defend the values that have drawn many, including our family, to this area. Stand up for the children who come to school to learn, to read and write in a safe, healthy, productive environment. By doing so, you will stand proud of the emotionally balanced and emotionally intelligent young adults that will leave your school building someday and become productive community members. Therefore, when students choose to break serious school rules, choose to violate legal regulations, choose to create fear in other students, admittedly choose to bring harmful weapons to the school repeatedly, admittedly choose to bring narcotics to the school repeatedly, admittedly choose to threaten to bring great harm or kill other students repeatedly, you must choose to stand for what is right. Allowing the student to return to the schools will create a risk for our son that is far too great for us to accept. Michigan law clearly provides you the leverage to permanently expel this student. It is our request that permanent expulsion be swiftly, seriously, and carefully considered, not only for our son, but the safety and well-being of other students. The danger is real, the threats continue, the stakes are far too high to not stand up for what's right. The student must own the responsibility for making unacceptable, life-threatening choices repeatedly. These were his choices. Your responsibility is simply to uphold the rules, guidelines, principles, and values of our school that our school has been founded on, and therefore you are only left with one choice, and that is to permanently remove this student, so he and his family can focus on getting the help that he needs. Thank you, Mr. Raft, for your efforts to keep the lines of communication open and your support in managing this difficult situation for the good of everyone. It is with confidence that we will leave, we leave this message with you to money, and it is our prayer that none of us ever look back and wish we had the courage to have stood up for a different choice in the face of an unavoidable tragedy. So, with confidence, we await your decision.
Thank you. Are there others who wish to address the board this evening? Yes.
Hi, my name is Larissa. I have four kids in this wonderful district who lived here for that reason, on the tail end of Suzie. Please take into consideration when making the decision on this student, one, that he receives the help that he needs, because I do feel for him and his family. I believe that everyone has the right to an education. I also believe that everyone has the right to an education without fear. That is not occurring at this point. Even when the child that is suspended is out, there are still threats being made. This needs to be taken into consideration. Students that do come forward, and there have been a few, for every student that comes forward, there are 10 to 20 students that do not contact administrators on narcotics, on weapons, on threats for fear alone. I am so proud of the boys that did come forward, and I feel as parents, as the board, as parents, we need to back them, let them know that it is acceptable, that it is good, that these people, these students can get help. So, please, when deciding the finality of this, which I believe is expulsion, take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others who wish to address the board this evening? No students who want to ask if we're going to have school tomorrow or not? A little disappointed.
On as scheduled. We are on as scheduled.
Okay. With that, Superintendent Grayden?
I did want to pass around, as I noted, Celine Area Schools and the Celine community suffered a great loss last week, and so on Thursday, March 20th at 7:00 PM, we will be, we are hosting a celebration of life event for Jim Letcher, and that'll be held at the middle school this morning, and I encourage those of you who are in contact with Jim, new Jim, to attend and help in that celebration. So, we have a sheet of paper, here's some information for you to pass around if you have others that would like to attend, make sure you get that information to them. Couple of other quick notes. You mentioned snow days, as you know, we have, currently have two days to make up. The state has, has yet to act on any type of minute adjustment, and so we are still bound by the days regulation, and so we currently have two days to make up at this point. We're looking at June 9th and 10th. We're still working on that, but it appears as though that's where we're going, so just a reminder that we are likely to look at a change in calendar at some point during the remainder of the year. It's really still too, as we can tell from tomorrow's forecast, it's still too early to make a final determination, but we're still moving forward with that plan, as they just failed, has not yet acted, and it sounds as though we're hearing again earlier this week that they're not likely to act on any type of minute adjustment.
Scott, how will that work with seniors and graduation ceremonies?
Senior, the intention right now would be if we were to add days, then seniors will still be dismissed on May 23rd, and graduation will occur on June 1st. We do not intend to change exit date for senior and graduation. We need about that week in between the last day of exams and graduation, so a move of the senior day would require and necessitate a move of the ceremony as well.
Okay.
Any questions about? The last day, we had the opportunity today to remove the, the stone, landmark stone from, from Houghton School, and inside there was a, a somewhat of a, I'll call it a time capsule, but it did have the Celine reporter from Wednesday, August 31st, 1966, when the building was open, at 10 cents per copper, or $3 per year you could order. So, I will pass this around. It did say Houghton School did open on time, it talks about who will be staffing the facility, and those of us who've been around a little while will recognize many of the names. I will pass that around, and we can take a look at that.
Do you guys know that was in there, or did it?
We had, we had heard there was a time capsule behind the, the numbers, and actually that, that is hollowed out, and there was this copper box was inside, fit right up inside of that. There was another time capsule that when, when Houghton was, I mean, in 2000, I believe that there were students when Houghton was re-accommodated to an early childhood center, there was a time capsule put under the new sign that was up front. That was actually open when those students graduated, so this is our only remnant time capsule that was there, so, kind of interested.
So, the newspaper was the sole contents of the box?
That was all that was in the box. We didn't get school open, we didn't have time to collect. But, that's all I have.
Other board members who have anything to speak to this evening?
Yeah.
That was good. Delhae?
Really quick, I was at the, not really quick, I'm supposed to go into a lot of detail here, so I'm going to. I was at the foundation meeting this morning, and as all of you know, the foundation's doing great things for us right now, raising money for our next generation classrooms, so I'm bringing you two opportunities to support the foundation. One is a fundraiser at one of probably the best restaurants in Ann Arbor, Pizza House. So, on Wednesday, March 19th, there's flyers in the back, pick one up on your way out. If you order pizza from there, they do deliver to Celine, which is great, but the proceeds will go to benefit the foundation. So, make sure on your way out, you can pick up a flyer off the table. Otherwise, there's electronic versions that are flying around on email and Facebook and such. The other opportunity is their spring open house, their spring recognition reception, and that is on Monday, April 28th, from 4 to 6, and it'll be at Stone Arch, so, yeah.
Any other board members?
I would like to thank Principal Halber and the high school for emailing out today an alternate exam schedule, just in case we do have a snow day, so it was a nice and preemptive schedule, so the kids would not worry about exams not being held in case we have several snow days.
The kids were worried about that.
Some were worried, two in my house.
Some thought they were going to be canceled altogether.
Yeah.
Anything to say?
Yeah, I'd like to just share something with the audience. University of Michigan is conducting research in the area of depression among young people, and tomorrow and Thursday, at a conference open to the public, the 12th Annual Depression on College Campus Conference, there'll be experts from across the United States, from Yale, from Harvard, from University of Michigan, and other schools, who are experts in the area of adolescent depression and dealing with the traumas of college transition. For many parents, if you have kids heading to college in a couple of years, I encourage you to, to look into it. It's free to students, so if you have friends or family that are attending University of Michigan, those students can attend for free. It is $150 registration if you're not a student. You can register at the Brackham Grad Center. Also, if you just reach into the University of Michigan website and just type in student depression, there's a website that takes you to the depression center, and it has great information there on resources available in local community, available at the university research that's been conducted, coping strategies, and other support services of that nature. And I encourage people to, to look into it. It's good information.
Thank you. Anything else? Raphael, got anything for us tonight?
Actually, yes. I want to say thank you to Mr. Grayden, Mr. Lodge, Principal Halber, and Mr. Raft. For last week, we had a documentary showing Race to Nowhere. And Race to Nowhere shows the, what students go through when it comes to stress, you know, with AP courses, and I want to say thank you to those individuals for contributing on the panel and the great discussion that happened after. And also thank you to Dr. Nak Paul from Celine Alive also for helping create this event, so.
Well-attended, too, I thought.
And Raft, this is a piece of tribute for you. One of the young ladies I know, I was there when she was born, and she's now graduating from University of California Davis, or graduation from University of California at Berkeley, with an honors degree. So, she put it together and it's done well. So, there is a story after this.
Anything else? The chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed. So, Chief?
Next.
Trustee Delhae. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Scheduled reports. Poetry Out Loud. Matt?
I had a great opportunity to introduce Matt. Matt's one of our high school students who participated in the vocal competition for Poetry Out Loud earlier this year in January. I was fortunate to be one of the judges for that event, and I can tell you it was a very competitive event. It was difficult and challenging for us to, to work through that process, and the rubric was very tight. And so, Matt is now our representative, and he heads off, from Celine, heads off to the state competition at Michigan State University. He's heading out Thursday night, and will be there Thursday and Friday, competing against other folks from across the state. So, we're excited. Matt has opportunity tonight to recite at least a couple of his, of his poems, if not all three. So, Matt, I don't know if you want to say a little bit about the competition and then the poems you will be reciting?
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for this opportunity, and it's, it's very helpful, since I will be going off this weekend to compete against 38 other students from all over the state, so thank you very much. So, what this competition is about is, it's a national recitation competition, and all the students, we pick three poems from a pre-selected list of poems that are on the website, Poetry Out Loud, and we recite three poems at the, in East Lansing this weekend. And we get graded, graded on a number of things, like posture, and how we, like our, our understanding of the poem, and a bunch of other things, so I guess be looking for those. So, I will be reading, reciting two poems today. The first one is called, "I'm a Fool to Love You," or, sorry, just kidding. It's called, it's called "To My Dear and Loving Husband" by Anne Bradstreet. And this poem fits two criteria that are required for the state competition, which is pre-19th century and 25 lines or less. So, this is "To My Dear and Loving Husband" by Anne Bradstreet. "If ever two were one, then surely we. If ever man were loved by wife, then thee. If ever wife were happy in a man, compare with me, ye women, if you can. I prize thy love more than whole minds of gold, or all the riches that the east doth hold. My love is such that rivers cannot quench, nor ought but love from thee give recompense. Thy love is such I can no way repay. The heavens reward thee manifold, I pray. That while we live in love, let so persevere; then while we live no more, we may live ever." So, the second poem is called, "Cartoon Physics Part One" by Nick Flynn. Children under, say, 10, shouldn't know that the universe is ever-expanding, inexorably pushing into the vacuum, galaxies swallowed by galaxies, whole solar systems collapsing. All of it acted out in silence. At 10, we are still learning the rules of cartoon animation, that if a man draws a door on a rock, only he can pass through it. Anyone else who tries will crash into the rock. 10-year-olds should stick with burning houses, car wrecks, ships going down, earthbound, tangible disasters. Arenas where they can be heroes. You can run back into a burning house. Sinking ships have lifeboats. The trucks will come with their ladders. If you jump, you will be saved. A child places her hand on the roof of a school bus and drives across a city of sand. She knows the exact spot it will skid, at which point the bridge will give, who will swim to safety, and who will be pulled under by sharks. She will learn that if a man runs off the edge of a cliff, he will not fall until he notices his mistake. Thank you."
Thanks, Matt, and, you know, best of luck in your competition. I'm sure you'll represent Celine well.
Thank you. Great job.
We have one action item this evening. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the policy committee's recommendation to adopt policy 8595, concussions and athletic activities as submitted. Trustee Delhae?
Second.
And Trustee Fries. Discussion? Superintendent Grayden?
Yep, just wanted to touch base. This is a policy that frankly has been in place. The legislature last year made a law relative to student concussion issues. Many of you who participated have now seen, teachers, coaches, and, and students have been involved in learning more about concussion issue, the issue of concussions, and so we needed a, a companion policy. I actually started work last year. We refined it, made some final tweaks. Really, in the end, we wanted, changed it to really adopt it to look at current Celine Area School students versus an issue relative to age in terms of when they turn 18. But we take the issue very seriously, and I know if you've been involved in whether it be community education or, or other athletics, or if you're participating in physical education at the elementary level, as a parent, we've got information all about this, and the staff they've been, as particular videos relative to training on that. So, this is now, makes us officially compliant.
Questions or comments from board members? Now, there's a, a training component to this?
Yep. It's potentially an annual training component as well, so you'll be hearing more.
So, Celine at the community ed level, community ed coaches will get the training to be able to recognize signs and things like that.
Scott, is applied to parent educators and other helpers in the school, like parents who come in and work at, at playground, that kind of stuff?
Not, not by policy. However, you know, we can talk about that in terms of a practice. It doesn't specifically, the policy doesn't call for it, the law does not call for it. The law's relative to teachers and coaches, but certainly we can expand that.
I would encourage you to do that, because you've got so many people that are volunteering and doing it all.
Potentially could.
Yeah, that's true. Just to get them the eyes and ears out there.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have four discussion items tonight. The first is Secretary Heineck, who also chairs our budget committee.
Budget committee met last week, and we discussed current state of the district finances. Couple items with the polar vortex, heating costs have risen a little bit this year over last year, but fortunately for us, Assistant Superintendent Janice Warner signed us into a five-year contract, so our rates are relatively low compared to what they're going at these days. We also looked at our new five-year forecast, ran some numbers for budgeting for the next few years, and discussed numbers, and that was about it.
Policy committee update. Trustee Delhae chairs that committee.
Yes, we've had two meetings so far. First one, Diane and I kind of got our orientation to the policy committee, which was very good. We discussed the concussion policy, finalizing that as we just approved, and we also discussed the testing one, which will, this comes up later.
It's actually the receiving file. It's an administrative regulation associated with this, but we just, we, some, we'd update it relative to the law, again, on the ad reg side and work that for policy.
Okay.
So, and we're looking at some new policies as well. So, our next meeting is March 31st?
Okay, very good. And Superintendent Grayden, professional development survey.
Yeah, I've got a, kind of a quick presentation here, and Assistant Superintendent Lodge and I'll kind of tag team this. As some of you know, we did a professional development survey on, between January 13th and the 27th, and so we wanted to share a little bit here tonight with the board. I've got an email that'll go out later tonight to the staff, kind of talking about the results, and then Mr. Lodge can talk a little bit about some of the things we've already started down the road in terms of using this feedback, so. Well, that doesn't show very well.
It's not hitting me at all.
Yeah. Sorry about that. There we go. All right. So, first of all, I have a quick overview. We asked the, the surf, surf staff to provide us some specific feedback related to professional development, both a little bit about how, what the professional development we provided this year and their thoughts on that, and then we kind of dove into a couple of other areas in terms of topic areas, delivery models, and in that regard. So, first, you know, I do want to thank, you know, we sent it to all certified staff, 307, 236 took the time to fill out the survey, so our response rate actually was, was very high, 77 percent. So, we feel like the information we gathered was, was credible in terms of the types of feedback we got. To note, we talked a little bit about current year, and in the first one, 87 percent of the staff either strongly agreed or agreed with the concept that the professional development that they participated in was relevant to their current job function. So, again, a solid number there in terms of the relevancy. If we got, jump to the next couple, when it talks about what they participated in this current year, helping them do their job better, is it three-quarters, 75 percent? And then specifically, does it help them better work with the students in their classroom, 74 percent? So, we looked at those three numbers, and again, I think one of the things, yes, it's helping job functions, and sometimes the professional development we provide may be specific to training. There may be, and I'll use, you know, I know with some of the things we have coming out, special education will be adjusting software. We're going to be training on that software, there'll be professional development, but the question is, it may improve their job function, it'd be hard for us to say, "How is that going to specifically help them with their students in the classroom?" So, we're really looking at providing a well-rounded professional development suite of activities and opportunities, but clearly the effort needs to be to kind of continue to focus on what are we going to do that provides relevant training to their specific classroom activities. If you look at kind of the overall quality of the professional development sessions that they've attended this past year, or during the current year, 72 percent kind of gave in that AV range, and 20 percent gave kind of the average C range. So, this is an opportunity for us, you know, this is the first year we've conducted this survey, and we want to continue to conduct it. So, this is an important slide for us moving forward in terms of really determining the types of, of training and professional development that we provide. types of training and professional development that we provide. You know, is it of quality by the staff that are participating in it? Some of the comments about it, in terms of they wrote, you know, the program should be more limited to one or two topics for sustained growth. One of the strategies that we provided this year was what we called choice groups. And there were some opportunities for staff to choose what it is they wanted to be involved in, and there were multiple opportunities for that. That's great in terms of really having given the staff member a chance to kind of, you know, jump to an area that they're interested in. The downside of that is that it becomes broad in its nature. And some of the feedback is if we were to focus on a couple, there might be a little bit more of an opportunity for systemic change associated with different activities. You know, they kind of switching from one topic to another. You know, they felt that that was something of interest. You know, you get down to the bottom, you know, they wrote the PD offer by the district doesn't always apply to their daily duties. Again, what is it that we're providing that specifically will help them in their activities in terms of what they're doing in the classroom? And then, you know, they want to make sure that what they're doing can be implemented in a timely fashion in the classroom. How relevant is the training we're providing or the professional development we're providing? So that was some feedback we got. There were more open responses that we received and Steve and then the committee. Steve, I don't know if you want to touch base now on kind of what we're doing with some of this information?
Sure. So we met with a group already on February twenty-fifth. It was assembled with the teachers and administrators to get their input on the survey itself and also look at a model for next year that takes into account some of the comments that were made on the survey. In particular, narrow focus, trying to get more focused on specifics that will really help teachers in the classroom. The other part, though, is teachers talk about wanting to continue with teacher leadership. We have our teachers leading a lot of our professional development sessions, which is really important. And then also still having some choice to it. So we worked together to talk about what would a model look like next year that allows for a more narrow focus like teachers were suggesting in the survey, but still allow for one part of the model to be involving some choice. And so we are working on some possibilities for next year. And we really want the teachers to know that what they say matters significantly to us and that we're going to keep trying to improve the model. And we can talk a little bit more about this as we move forward.
So the next part of the survey really got into, you know, analyzing what are the perceived needs of the staff. So it really broke down into two areas in terms of what is their level of familiarity with the subject area or content area? And what is their level of interest in that area? And so for us, looking at, you know, kind of if you look the familiarity and the interest, what they look to do, what are areas where there's not a lot of familiarity and a high level of interest? So one of the things we determined to be high priority areas were things where if we were below the median in terms of familiarity, meaning that on average, the staff had a little bit less knowledge in this area. And if you looked at seventy percent in terms of their level of interest, was above seventy percent. So you looked at the area, okay, what do I not know a lot about, but I want to learn more? What am I interested in? So you'll see now on this slide, this breaks down how they look at the high priority areas. So the areas where we were below the median in familiarity and above the median in interest, the four Cs, you've heard us talk about that before. Communication, creativity, critical thinking, and collaboration. And providing those opportunities for skill development in that area for our students was one of the areas that was in that high priority range. That ties off to, in some ways, really to goal number two in particular for us in our strategic framework. Teacher leadership development, Steve highlighted that. We've started to achieve a fair amount of success. Our teachers are really the experts in terms of particular content delivery and specific content areas. So we've really had an opportunity last year. We had an institute in the summer that they participated in and are now leading that professional development. And peer-to-peer opportunities are really expanding. You'll see as we get to the service delivery model later, that's kind of echoed in terms of the type and manner of delivery on that. And then understanding the common core. The common core is coming. You know, it was interesting, the folks that we work with said they very seldom see this level of interest in the common core. But they were excited to see that, okay, the staff really knows it's coming and there's a level of interest there. So it's an important one for us to make sure we continue to focus on. If you look at the other, these moderate priority areas, just a couple of things I want to highlight, you know, and this was nice to see, building student engagement and technology instruction and integration. If you see, if you go all the way over to the end, those are very high in terms of the level of interest. You know, nine out of ten staff in both those areas indicated that's something they're interested in seeing. Now, you know, conversely, there's fairly high numbers in terms of their familiarity. They're familiar with ways to build student engagement. But those are two kind of key areas for us as we move forward. You think about our next-generation classrooms, level of student engagement and the integration of technology are two core functions there. So I think that's something that we want to kind of piggyback on. And then the low priority, some things are high, have a high level of knowledge and familiarity and less interest. Those are just some of the areas that were, that came out in that area. We looked into our strategic framework. We wanted to get some feedback in terms of our strategic framework, in terms of their areas, again, the familiarity and interest. And this is a little bit smaller and more narrow because we just frankly asked them about the five goal areas and not to burst Janice's bubble. But as it turns out, they're not particularly familiar with goal number five and as it turns out, they're not particularly interested in goal number five. And that's really, again, this financial stability goal area. So, you know, that was something that was not a surprise for us, but it was good to see that there were some interested. You go on the other ones there and you start to get a sense of, okay, really, what are the goal areas? How familiar are they with their, you know? One of the questions that the board has asked before, you know, does the staff understand the framework? Do they know about the framework? And if you look at this, you know, particularly as you get down to the bottom, which we call goal number four, you know, eight out of ten staff members know what goal number four is all about and what we're trying to do relative to that. And in the seventy-five to eighty percent range, when you talk about really goals number two and three as well. So that's an area we want to continue to go. High levels of interest in that goal number four, which is good. We talked about the environment we want to have as a school district. There's a fair amount of familiarity that we want to have, a great environment for, as a community. But there's also a high level of interest in saying, we need to make sure that we're a great place for our students, a great place for our staff and our community. So it's reassuring to see some of that, but it areas also for us to work on, specifically around the strategic framework. But it's good feedback to kind of get a sense of what does our staff, what level of familiarity do they have relative to those goals? Steve, I don't know if you want anything on that? So then the next part is kind of the delivery formats. How does it, how is it that our staff want to have their professional development delivered? And so the first one, the highest rated one, hands-on participation. And I think about some of the technology integration training that's occurring now, where it's not, we're going to sit and get. It's going to be hands-on. Sometimes it's shoulder to shoulder with students in the room. Sometimes it's one-on-one. Sometimes it's in the small group areas. But again, we're trying to make sure we're providing hands-on. Choice group selection, I think this kind of gets back ninety percent kind of wanted to be in that choice group area where they had some say at the types of professional development that they would be engaged in. And then, you know, obviously, the series of topic-related workshops, kind of the workshop model as being a way for development. Get down to some of the other ones and, you know, in-class observations and job embedded and teacher-led, you have still strong numbers there. And honestly, you know, that's an area where we've seen our teacher leaders really taking off. Particularly at the middle school, I know they've done a fair amount of teacher-led, peer-to-peer observations where they'll go in without an administrator, observe another teacher as staff, and come out and talk specifically about what they saw. And this is a non-evaluation process, but it's about opportunity for me to, for a teacher to see a teacher teaching and think about how they could incorporate some of those strategies and in a reflective way to prove their craft.
If I could jump back to that choice group selection being, a lot of people very interested in that. It sort of presents a little bit of a dilemma in that comments say, narrow the focus, which would largely mean less choices, drive a more narrow focus. So we're trying to figure out how to balance that next year. One of the ways in which we're watching some other districts with this is Brighton and Mylan, for example, are doing some where teachers are forming their own professional development teams and being able to really choose some choice areas there, being able to bring it back to the district, propose agendas. And then we would either accept them based on how closely they're aligned to the strategic framework or some of our other goals and then really allow for that choice to happen. But then, a large percentage of the time still is a narrow focus. So there'd be that combination. We're trying to work with that next year to see that something like that happens. And then, as Mr. Grayden was talking about, lab site visits are really interesting at the middle school level. They literally go in when the students are there. And that's a real important learning piece where students are engaged with the teacher and then the teacher steps out with a substitute there to be able to talk to the other teachers about what they observed and monitored. And that's really where there's a lot of power in that. So we're working through that.
So these were, again, the delivery forwards. We get to the next page, a couple of interesting points here. One, computer-based training had solid numbers or okay numbers. Online web seminars, this idea now that, you know, could some of our professional development be delivered in a different model? We've got some feedback on that. It's not on the first page in terms of desired methods of delivery, but it's, you know, we saw where that, and it did outpace administrator-led. So that welcome back meeting will continue to be short and brief. And in that regard, it's clear that the folks who filled out the survey were not particularly interested in simply that administrative letter, even that lecture. If you look, that lecture one is the lowest one. And so the sit-and-get model that really was a hallmark of training and professional development in districts for many, many years is something at least that responded to our survey, I said they're really not interested in it. There are other opportunities to make it a better, a better professional development opportunity for them. So we take that to heart and are looking at that as we move forward. Preference in terms of schedule. The other thing, we've been kicking around for quite some time, and this year was our first foray into that in terms of the idea of more regular and continuous opportunities for professional development. Historically, we've looked at the full-day professional development, whether it be a little bit before school and then intermittent professional development days throughout the year. We tried to implement something we called Super Wednesdays without impacting, as we know with our snow, we're fairly tight in terms of our envelope, in terms of the number of days we can have and the number of minutes we have each day in getting our ten thousand ninety-eight hours per state to capture our full foundation allowance per student. So we've got some pretty tight parameters. And wanting to kind of break up professional development, the method this year was the Super Wednesday, which means that ninety minutes of professional development occur monthly after school. And so we wanted to get feedback as to whether or not something along the lines of an early or a delayed start or an early release would be something that we would want to consider. And really come to the board, come to the bargaining units, and ultimately go to the community and say, we feel this is a valid model. We needed to get some feedback on that. And so as you see, you know, really, you know, of the top three, you know, that were in that, you know, again, fifty-five to sixty percent of the staff either most preferred or preferred the idea of a before-school, for the first day of school model or an early-release day associated with professional development. And we've talked a little bit now about that as an opportunity. And then the other one was cool calendar days throughout the year. So we've really taken that to heart in terms of thinking about what is a schedule that, you know, evidence here shows the staff is interested in.
I would say that, and as we explore that, we would be really considerate of the community too, that what would that do? It impacts students and parents if school was released early on certain days. And we would have to really work hard on making sure that the community would buy into that as well because we know that's important.
And we do provide and have some summer training opportunities. Looking at summer, and you see that kind of the Super Wednesday model or after-school contact on Saturdays. It's clear that we should not have training on Saturdays. We can unite on one thing, and I think it's no Saturday professional development. I can second that. The highlights, again, I'd like to thank the staff, obviously, the certified staff that filled this out, seventy-seven percent of them took the time to do that and has good feedback for us. We appreciate that. You know, the majority felt like what they participated in this year was relevant to their job function. They integrated a strong interest in technology integration and building student engagement and four Cs. Those are areas of focus for us as a district to get feedback that the staff is interested in that. I think shows that we're really, I think, in the sweet spot in terms of those particular areas. Still plenty of work to do and Steve and his committee are working on it. Next steps, as we've talked about, Steve and the team of staff are looking at what opportunities they have using this information to move forward with professional development. That's attuned really to what are the professional needs of our staff. I'll go back to the climate survey, which is kind of my plug, that that's going to be coming out again. If you remember last year, in April, April fourteenth, the one-year-old kickoff issue, we have a two-week window where we ask our students, sixth, eighth grades, our sixth and twelfth grade students, all of our staff, both certified and non-certified, as well as the community, to give us feedback in terms of the school climate. And one of the things that came back from our staff last year was, you know, what ways that we can do, learn more about the professional needs of our staff. And so in response to that, we really said we needed to get really some in-depth information about what types of areas the student staff want to have professional development in, what are the methods they want to deliver, and what would be essentially a schedule that would be appropriate. So we've taken it to heart and the survey results are going to kind of guide us on that process.
Looking at the one slide that talks about scheduling training, fifty-six percent said they'd like it to be for the first day of school proceedings. Sixty-three percent, sixty-three percent is early release and sixty-two percent during school calendar days. How are they going to incorporate the training in their teaching practices if it's done during the year in which they already have the curriculum built?
A lot of it is reflection. One of the important ways you build professional development is you, for example, would look at student work one month, go back and try something different based on what you're seeing with that data, and then be able to get back together and report back with each other. For example, reading apprenticeship is a model we used at the grades four through eight level. And on one particular month, they'll lead a session. It might be, one of the sessions was on providing constructive feedback to students. So that might be, you go back in a writer's workshop and you provide feedback on a certain piece that all the teachers are trying, and then you come back the next month to talk about your results. And you need to be doing that ongoing. It's not so much that they're rebuilding the curriculum, but it's looking at specifics and being able to talk about those as you go. It's formative assessment, which is something that's really important. In fact, one of the highest correlated areas that can impact student achievement is that you provide meaningful feedback. So that's an area that has to be ongoing. In other words, you wouldn't be able to say, we're going to talk about this at the beginning of the school year and then never talk about it again till the next school year. It needs to be ongoing. So that's an example of how you would be doing that all the way.
That's where I can see the Super Wednesdays doing that. I'm just trying to figure out if you're introducing the concept just before Labor Day to teachers. They've already got the concept for the year. How are they going to incorporate that learning practice there?
Just because it's saying that they would want to do some professional development for the school year, we would not think that doing five days of professional development before the school year starts is a good model. We still feel like there's going to need to be that ongoing throughout, that we wouldn't see that that would be.
Right, a couple of things. For example, I'll use a before-school training. You know, we have, we are going to have new special education IP software. That training would occur before school and probably be longer in duration than a smaller ninety-minute timeframe. Also, if you look at Common Core, there are going to be times where we're going to need to introduce information about the Common Core, have some breakout opportunities for content areas at grade levels to talk about what the Common Core looks like in their areas. That may be something we'll do a day of early on and that will maybe guide some work throughout the year. But as Steve said, you know, for us to do a week of professional development and then jump into school year and not really come back following year, just.
That's what I was trying to figure out. It didn't make sense to me.
Yeah, I don't feel like it would be valuable for us to say, even though it's saying that some of the, some of the days could come before the start of school year, to put them all there. We've seen some districts do that. That's not very meaningful. So, you know, the survey says would, you know, still favor some days before, but we would have a balance in there.
So blended model.
Right.
Some Super Wednesdays and some others.
Something that, I mean, obviously, we're going to need to work on it, but yeah, it would be a sustained model.
Just a comment, the idea of the blended, where you have teachers working with their peers, develop fine best practices, bring them back in, coupled with some central administration-driven kind of stuff, does narrow it. It's a great combination. I've seen it work in more in one place. It's great because they own what they find.
Okay, our last discussion item is the March twenty-fifth workshop. At that workshop, we are going to focus on mental health. And if you recall, last year in February, we dedicated that work session to mental health. Really went over what our capabilities were within the district, tried to identify some gaps that we may have and how to fill them. And I think the focus this year is going to build on that, where not only we're going to look at what resources we have internally, but also look externally and what resources are available outside the district that we can bring in to help out. Because I think one thing that I think the board kind of agrees on is a lot of the issues with young people, especially when we're talking about alcohol, drugs, addiction. The root cause is a mental health issue. And while I applaud the mayor for his task force on heroin, that's reacting to the problem. And we're working at it from the opposite end, that we're going to work on the prevention end of it. And if we can get kids early, when we identify that they do have some issues, provide the resources to that student and also the parent so that they will come forward. Because unfortunately, mental health still has a stigma within our society. And that's unfortunate, but it's there. And I think we view it, I think we feel strongly as a board, that we want to put the resources out there to the parents so that in conjunction with the district, we out there to the parents, so that in conjunction with the district, we can help these young people and get them back to where they need to be. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Scott and also Trustee Delhae, who's kind of grabbed this issue proactively, and I appreciate your efforts on this as we move towards the 25th.
One of the things, and I'll preface it, and I'll turn it over to Trustee Delhae. The, you know, we've really talked about our strategic framework, and this really now comes down to two areas. One, we talked about goal number four, that we want to have a positive environment that promotes student and staff well-being, satisfaction, and progress. We need to make sure that our staff and our students are healthy. And so, this is an opportunity for us to focus on our student health as it relates to making sure they're here and they're ready to learn, as President Holden discussed. Then, we're strengthening goal three, which is strengthening our family-school relationships and ultimately strengthening our relationships and partnerships with higher ed. We did have a meeting today that Trustee Delhae coordinated, and I'll let her talk about it with the University of Michigan, that I think, you know, sort of highlights our ability to potentially partner in this area and really bring some additional resources to our community. And we'd like to probably talk more about that on the 25th as well.
So, as Mr. Grayden mentioned, we met, I guess, to go back a little bit. Incidents that occurred recently kind of shed some light, and I think, as unfortunate as they were, give us an opportunity to look at what we have in place and where we need to, as you said, fill in some gaps. Mr. Grayden and I are meeting with Mark Shuvi tomorrow afternoon to discuss what programming we do already have, who we're partnering with. We have some wonderful resources all around us that we could be tapping into, such as Don Farm and this contact that we had at U of M today. We met with Mary Jo DePree. Practice that one. DePree. She is the Director of Wolverine Wellness at the University of Michigan, which is the health and well-being of students. They deal with the drug alcohol program, sexual issues, depression, things like that. So, we had a really, really great meeting with her. I thought there's some opportunities. She's working right now with Ann Arbor Public Schools on some grants for them for a prevention program. And she just really, I felt, knew where we were going, what we were looking for, tapped into that, and gave us some, some things that we can do and start looking at. So, we're going to move forward. We're going to meet with Mr. Shuvi tomorrow, as I said, and talk to him, and we'll have a better idea of what the agenda looks like for that March 25th meeting after that, I think.
Does she run the program for University of Michigan students for that?
Yes, yeah. And then, she's also the co-chair of the A2C3 Coalition in Ann Arbor, which is the Ann Arbor Community Campus Coalition, and they deal with all those issues. So, she's a, she's a great resource, I think, for us to tap into.
She identified, you know, as we talked about, kind of what we're doing and what they're doing, there were some commonalities there, some of the tools they use to kind of look at their, their structure in terms of what they're doing. You know, one of the things, if you start talking about this issue, a lot of times you kind of dive into one particular area. So, she had a broader perspective in terms of, you know, we'll call them best practice or get into too much jargon, but essentially, a way to look at it and really looking at the issue holistically within a community and thinking about all the different areas you need to make sure you're providing, not only something, but something of value. And so, I think there's an opportunity for us, I don't want to say, you know, jump too far ahead, but it's clear that to me, as some of the resources that they have, some of the things, there's going to need to be some ongoing work in this area. But I think, you know, next Tuesday would be, a week, two weeks from today would be a good starting point to have that conversation.
Could we have some? I'm sorry. I was just wondering about recommended staffing levels. We've always talked about the number of counselors, social workers, and things that we have in our buildings and how to get them to really do what they need to do instead of.
You know, I don't disagree with that, and one of the things, and this is one of the concern I had when we talked with Karen, I think for our first step is really looking at the bigger picture, what are the issues we want to address? If we dive to the solutions early on, I'm fearful that, you know, that becomes what would happen. So, Karen, that's one.
She, I mean, she mentioned some really great things that can get us up and running, you know, doing some focus groups and things like that and finding out, you know, I, my experience so far is, I feel like, and she kind of agreed, the kids want to talk, you know, they want to talk to us, they want to reach out. I think it's figuring out the best way to do that, and I think that's the first step. And then, we'll see what they need for us to do to.
One of the, one of the benefits of, you know, being near a, you know, colleges and universities like U of M and Eastern, particularly, we have your program, they provide some student interns, if they need to partner, you know, there may be an opportunity to bring labor resources in that regard to kind of help us with some of the focus groups and some of the different things to make some connections early on, to make sure we've got the right information to move forward. I don't want to jump too quickly to the solution phase before we have all of our information.
She also mentioned the testing, that testing that's been done too and getting that data and how that would help us going forward and help us get grants and things like that.
One of the things, you know, in the past, we've done, the University of Michigan has done a survey, many of our students have participated in it. We have, you know, three years of good information, and one of the things we talked about was whether it be at this meeting or another meeting, having Dr. Carol Boyd, who conducted this National Institute of Health research in Celine as well as other communities, really come and talk to us about what they've learned about, not only our communities compared to other communities. And now, you know, that grant unfortunately has expired. The next opportunity is a protocol called MiFi, which is a state department that, at this point, everyone in the county will be administering this year. We're going to be administering it later this year. Once we get our MiFi data won, it allows us, gives us some of the data to apply potentially for grants. But if it's at county level, we can then leverage and look at what's working in certain communities, what are the nuances associated with the communities.
Well, and I think the best point she made about the MiFi was that you're able to go in and see what your exact issues are, and you're not correcting something that doesn't need to be corrected. And the example that she gave was, you know, in one of their segments of the school, they were going to go forward and do drunk driving. Well, nobody on campus drives really, so that's not a big area of concern for them. So, this helped them go in and determine that and say, oh, well, this isn't where we want to put our resources. So, that was kind of a.
Yeah, I mean, I think, certainly, you look at these national data, sometimes if we react to national data versus Celine-specific, we may miss mark, we may not, but I think her example was really kind of enlightening to us, that we really need to make sure we ask a lot of good questions early in the process to get more data.
Any other comments, thoughts?
Great start. So, we do intend, so you guys know, we do, we'll have, you know, staff members here, we'll have, you know, I know Kurt and Brad Beasley were involved in goal number four, I think Mark would be someone we want, may have some other folks coming. So, there will be, you know, more than just Karen and I, you know, what we've learned. So, we'll have, I don't see a formal presentation, it continues to be a dialogue format.
It's just me.
Yeah, you can take it. But just so, I want to make sure you guys are aware.
We have a strong team in place. This is really about adding on to that team.
Right.
And Raphael, you're a student. I'd like your perspective on this, not to put you on the spot, but.
Oh, no, you're fine. I think this is a great start to, one, try to identify what the, what issue you want to solve and get to the root of the problem, because there surely is a problem, as you, as you mentioned. And what Ms. Delhae said, the incident on the 15th truly put a spotlight on the problem. So, there should, so I think this is a great start.
Okay. You know, another thing that we may want to talk about on the 25th, I don't know, is, you know, we have a liaison officer at the high school, and that agreement is up for renewal. So, I think it's a good time for us to reflect on that experience, and is that delivering what we want? Because certainly, that's, you know, that's a resource, it's also money. And that, and we can look at redeploying that into other areas if there's a need. And that, so I think at some point, we'll probably have a robust discussion on that and say, do we want to continue along the lines of the liaison officer, or do we want to go in a little different direction? And I think that'll, not only robust, it'll be a healthy discussion, and I think we need to have it.
When, when does that have to be decided? Like, what is?
The contract expires at the end of the school year.
Okay.
Yeah, probably at the start of the school year.
We don't have to make a decision.
Not on March 25th.
No, but we should start thinking about that. We should start thinking about that, get our thoughts together, so when we have that discussion, we can have a good airing on that issue.
I think one of the things highlighted to me in the last couple of weeks is, as a board, we discussed this last February. The district is doing surveys with students and parents about their feeling about mental health and drug abuse and alcohol use. It was a topic that the district has talked about for a couple of years now. We've put actions in place at the high school level, middle school level, well, educational preventive in nature. But it does highlight the fact that some of our work has not been shared enough with the community in the last couple of years to get that awareness out there to the community of what we are, have been doing. And I think one thing we'd be sensitive to with the work going forward, making sure we're building that partnership to the local community, to make sure that they're where what we are doing, what resources are available, because it's resources for our students, results resources for the community. And I think that's one that came out in conversations with people in the community, they didn't necessarily know what we've been doing here in the district. You know, without getting specifics about the incident, we were working with those families, and, you know, we can't talk about that. So, there's things like that that we need to make sure people where, are doing those things, and need to continue to do those things.
Anybody else? Okay. Consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to authorize items A through F as part of the consent agenda. They move? It's Gary Heinecke with a second from Trustee Carter. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Item scheduled on the next agenda, that's our work session, which will be dedicated to the mental health issue. We're looking forward to that. Can we get Chase to take that?
Yeah.
Is that possible to do that? Because I think that's going to be a good evening, and we want to get that out to as wide a audience as we can. And if we have it on the website, people can watch it at their leisure, and that's what we would appreciate that. Anything else on the next agenda?
Okay. Well, I should say, we do have prior to the start of that meeting, and it will kind of kick off that meeting, we'll be honoring and celebrating the work of our transportation department, our snow crew, which includes our grounds and a few other members, as well as the Department of Public Works in the city, who really, you know, those folks in general kind of kept us going through what was a very challenging winter. So, six o'clock, we'll have a reception for an invite of the staff that have participated in that, and then we'll recognize them right at the start, and then we'll dive into the work session.
Yeah, when the roads have been narrowed by about 40 percent.
Yeah.
God bless the bus driver for navigating.
Yeah.
This is the second opportunity for public comment. Are there any members of the audience who wish to address the board this evening? Come on up.
Good evening. Naomi Valporter, President of the Support Staff. I hear a lot of talk about training and professional development for certified staff. I'm not hearing a lot about training with support staff. We've had, we are coming up on our first one, and that's our CPI, CPR for paras. And my other support staff had very little training or professional days. There's so much technology that's being used in our schools now, and we get no training. And when we're in the classrooms and we're asked to keep our students within the classroom and what they're doing, we're, we're looking kind of silly. And I'd like to think that we're a part of the school system and that some professional days or hours be presented to us. You're also talking about your eyes and ears in your schools for our troubled students. Let us be a part of that. That's all we're asking. We are part of the staff, not certified, I understand that, but we are a part of the staff.
Thank you. Are there others who wish to address the board this evening? Okay, the next.
You should also be noted, I know that we, we had a moment of silence tonight for Jim Letcher, who was a friend of mine, but also, we lost another staff member in the last two weeks. And most of you, maybe some of you know, I don't, that, Greg would know, but David Jodley, welding fabrication teacher here for 20 years, lost his battle with cancer, and was buried over the weekend, Saturday. So, just to make sure that everybody was aware of that. So, he was a very, very good instructor, multiple, multiple people that went to state, you know, Skills USA contests, and he had, his kids have gone on to, his former students have gone on to compete at the world nationals through Waschau Community College. So, he's done very, very good things here, so just to make a note of that.
Thanks for sharing that.